Meeting will be called to order.
Woo-hoo.
Chair, the night working?
Here.
Vice President.
Here.
Director Milken.
Here.
Secretary Davis.
Here.
Trustee Vardy.
Here.
Trustee Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee Lena.
We'll have, uh... With, uh... Approval of the minutes. That's June 26th, monthly meeting.
Move we adopt the minutes?
Remove the agenda.
It's been approved the agenda.
Move we approve the agenda?
Second.
I want to propose that in addition to the minutes, um, reference to Tech Trek last month, it would be Ann Arbor Tech Trek, Ann Arbor Spark Tech Trek, to give it some context. As I read the minutes about Tech Trek, if I didn't know that, I wouldn't have known why I said it.
It's true.
Okay, um, we can, we need to amend the minutes?
Yeah, but let's do the agenda first.
Okay, alright. Alright, so, um, if the agenda has been supported and approved?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, um, we would like to, um, get approval of the minutes. So do we do that later?
No.
Just need a motion.
Just need a motion, motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
You are moved and supported, all in favor?
No.
So now discussions, Phil.
Phil?
And now I would suggest that Ann Arbor Sparks Tech Trek, the minutes be so amended to reflect their sponsorship of that.
Okay, um, anyone wants to say anything about that?
It's a good idea.
It's, it's fine, it's, I support that.
Okay.
It's clarification of language.
Okay, um, so is there a support for adding this to the agenda?
Support.
And second.
Yeah, move and support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, alright.
Now we approve the minutes.
Now, all in favor to approve the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Only two, only two people saying.
Aye, aye. Ask about the names and then you'll find out.
Who's not approved, that is not approved? No, I could think, Mrs. ... Now, um, I'm gonna ask, Phil, did you want to discuss this right now or do you want to do it later?
Discuss what?
The Tech Trek.
No discussion necessary, just amendment to the text of the minutes.
Just amendment, okay. So we're all stripped, alright, I just wanted to make sure. Alright, so the minute's been taken care of. Now, citizen participation.
Nothing to add this month, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Nothing from the public? Alright, special reports, Harriet Street update, Vice President Mueller.
Good evening, we actually have two presentations this evening from the Economic Community and College Division of the college, and first tonight, we're going to ask Madeline Bernard-Diab, who is the Employment Services Specialist at Harriet Street, to step forward, and Madeline, I will turn it over to you and you can talk about all the great work we're doing up there at Harriet Street. Thank you. Good evening, how are you guys doing today?
Great.
So my name is Madeline Bernard-Diab, I'm the Employment Services Manager for the Harriet Street Center. Um, I wear two hats, actually, and I think that kind of gets confusing for not only my family, but my staff and actually WCC staff. Um, well, sometimes I feel like it's two ti- two full-time jobs, but it's really two separate jobs in one. The first job is I oversee the Harriet Street Center, um, and also my second job is the Jobseekers Contract through Michigan Works Southeast. I love technical assistance. Um, so our overall goal at Harriet Street is to offer assistance to the local community with the end goal of helping them improve their lives through education and also through employment. We partner with the Adult Transitions Department at WCC to offer their GED program at our location. They have three locations that they utilize, um, the Harriet Street Center is one of them. They have a morning session and actually an evening session as well, and we also partner with Washtenaw Literacy, they have a tutoring program in the afternoons. Now, to give you kind of magnitude of how many students we have at Harriet in terms of GED, fifty-seven students were enrolled, um, totally in the winter semester, twenty-seven in the morning and thirty in the evening. Of those students, we had nine people who graduated and received their GED, their GED completion. This is Desmond Livingston, he's one of our GED students that just finished in the winter semester, he's actually standing with Stacy Peterson, one of the instructors. Stacy's great, the, the other instructors love her, my staff loves her, the students really love her, and she's been at Harriet over nine years since I've been there. Desmond stated that he left high school in eleventh grade and he really regretted that decision. Um, he finished his GED and he's hoping that he will go on to graduate from college, eventually get his law degree, and then eventually become a judge, so we'll see how he does.
The Supreme Court, I'm sure, yeah.
Yes, hopefully he'll be our next, one of our nominations, right? Oh, I was saying something political, why would I keep it to myself? Whenever the computer lab is not being utilized, for classes, we open them to the community. We also bridge the gap between the Ypsilanti community, Michigan Works, and also the college at large. So in 2017, we offered 1,629 services such as open computer labs, faxing, copying, applying to WCC, and filling out financial aid forms to the community. This is a picture of Gladys James. Gladys has been coming to the Harriet Street Center since I've been there, and I've been there nine years. I finally convinced Gladys that she needed to go back to school, and she started in remedial English and remedial math, and we spent a lot of time, I spent a lot of time grading her, her work, and checking it with red pen, and she eventually got to the point where her English skills, where she mastered her English skills. She just graduated this semester from WCC and she's enrolled in EMU, will start in the fall.
Wow, great.
I love Gladys. Now, this is where I put on my second hat. I oversee the Michigan Works Southeast Jobseekers Contract. In November 2016, we secured another three-year contract with Michigan Works Southeast to run the Employment Services area of their, Department of their area, and deliver the following services. We assist people with applying for unemployment, registering to work, job seeking, conduct workshops, and respond to any community employment-related needs. In the past several months, we've had an uptick in what are called rapid responses, which occur when employers do a massive layoff, or if they're permanently closing their doors. We know that being unemployed can be very stressful for people, so we partner with Michigan Works staff to go to the business and talk to these folks about the unemployment process, and help to ease their minds and explaining the next steps. An example of one of these companies that we've worked with recently, as everyone has heard, is Toys R Us. So we've actually worked with Toys R Us in Jackson County and Washtenaw. Our current contract is from July 1st through June 30th, 2019, and it totals $886,861, which covers salaries, fringe benefits, mileage, professional development, and admin cost. So if you think about that, it pretty much covers the entire, every staff member that we have that's covered under this, this contract, so no money out of general fund is spent on this contract. So, we are now expanded. Originally, our contract was in Washtenaw County, um, and since Ju- July of 2016, we now cover Jackson, Lenaway, Hillsdale, and Washtenaw Counties. The contract covers the following staff in the four counties, um, we have one coordinator that assists with all of them, we have three FTE in Washtenaw and Jackson, one and a half in Lenaway, and one and a half in Hillsdale. In 2017, we assisted 15,565 people in those four counties. Now, keep in mind that these are unduplicated numbers, so it's highly possible that we assisted these folks more than, than on one occasion throughout the year. It's also possible that they came to different counties throughout that year. To give you an example of the magnitude of the amount of people we assist, every single person who applies for unemployment benefits in each of these counties has to see one of our staff, okay, that we just listed. Everyone who's looking for work, everyone who's unemployed, underemployed, is just looking for a change in employment, they have to see one of our staff. They come from all walks of life and educational backgrounds, and I think people kind of get confused and think that's for people who are, you know, don't have their GED or don't have enough skills. We see everyone who doesn't have a GED or high school diploma to a PhD. These are the counts, the clients that we serve by county in 2017. As you can see, Washtenaw County is one of our biggest counties, so we see more people in that county, um, followed by Jackson, and then Lenaway and Hillsdale. Two more of my kudos, I love working with my, my community folks. Rhonda on the left is a single mom, she has three kids, putting ten-month-old twins. She, in the last year, had a, I know, we also get, it's fun because I get to hold babies when she comes in. She had a major trauma, she had a major burn in the last year that required, um, a lot of medical care, and so she comes into the center to think, do things like faxing and copying and using the computer to kind of help get her to that next level, to kind of get through this hurdle that she's going through right now. She says, "The center has been crucial to my medical recovery, knowing I have a place to go fax, type, print, and most importantly, is staff assistance. I live in Mylan, no facility comes close to this one, the resources are wonderful." This is Michelle, she is, she graduated actually with her bachelor's degree, but she still comes into our center to utilize our services, and I think that's where sometimes people get confused, that it's just WCC, only WCC students can come to Harriet Street Center, but it's not. WCC is a community center, it is here for the community, and Harriet Street is, is no different. So anyone, whether you're a student or not, is more than welcome to come into our center. Any questions? Yes?
Since your GED program graduated nine people?
At Harriet.
How do you feel about that number?
It's great.
Are we excited about it, or are you hopeful?
I'm excited that every person, any person that graduates.
Good answer.
Yeah, yeah. Any person, any computer that we get. And I miss them too after a while, because we see them every day, they become family.
What was it in the prior program?
So, I don't oversee the Adult Transitions Program, so I don't have all of their solid numbers, but that sends, I'm just, I offer them space within that center, um, but what I will say is that it's been, the numbers have been pretty consistent. Originally, when that GED test had changed, there was a drop, drop-off in numbers, but that has steadily increased.
If I may, we have an outstanding, um, director for our GED program, Bonnie Tru, and Linda, do you want, excuse me, Linda, would you like to say anything about it?
No, but that, so, I think the, um, we offer classes on the WCC campus, the Harriet Street Center, as well as Ypsilanti Township Center. So, you know, we had well, a lot more than nine graduates in the GED program. We had over, well over a hundred, I think it was like 125. Trustee Hatcher spoke at the graduations this past year, so, but I can get those specific numbers for you.
So the nine that I mentioned, just to be clear, are just from the, this past winter semester, in that just the students that were attending Harriet Street Center.
Got you.
Justy, Vardy?
On the GED program, do we do anything to assist with the other counties that you serve with the Michigan Works, or is that a separate thing just for Washtenaw?
The, my contract through Michigan Works is just to, is, doesn't include GED, it just includes the Employment Services Jobseekers portion of what Michigan Works does, but I know Bonnie Tru is heavily involved with Michigan Works Southeast and with the GED completion program through the, through this region. So she's involved in those counties, even though she's just responsible for the WCC program.
Yes.
I just wanted to add that Stacy's one of my former students, so I love her too. The GED exams, there are five of them now, five or six of them, are incredibly difficult. We should all try it.
I did.
It's not easy, um, number one, and number two, didn't we get some sort of recognition for having the highest percentage of completion?
Yes, we did.
Last year, so, in answer to your question, it looks fifty-seven, nine, it looks bad, but it's an incredible accomplishment to do those exams, and I challenge you to, I'm not doing it, but...
Thank you.
Any other questions?
It sounds great.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
For doing your job.
Thank you, you did an outstanding job, thank you.
So, thank you.
And thank you for the numbers, I always appreciate numbers.
Yeah. Respect to the honor.
She does such a great job, she, she's delightful, and everyone loves her there. So, um, for the next presentation, I'm going to introduce Anthony Williamson, who is a Community Development Manager who works out at Park Ridge, and Anthony can tell us what he's been up to.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Anthony Williamson, I'm a Community Development Manager for Washtenaw Community College of Park Ridge Center, uh, which is a unique blending of academic enrichment and community programs. Uh, the mission of, of Park Ridge Community Center is to enhance the quality of life for Ypsilanti residents by supporting children, youth, and families through a wide range of programs and services. I'm going to highlight a few of those services, uh, and talk about the area where we provide services in. So, Park Ridge Community Center is located in the middle of about five Ypsilanti community schools where we draw our students from. The high school, the middle school, um, Perry Elementary School, Erickson Elementary School, and Esterbrook. Uh, most of our students attend all of those classes, um, all of those schools, as we are feeder for all, for all of our programs. I just wanted people to get a map, get an understanding of the area and our catchment area, but not only do we serve the families who live right near Park Ridge, but throughout the Ypsilanti community. We have programming for children K to 12. Our after-school program is a free, free program for children in grades K through 12. We have twenty-five participants annually with a daily average of twenty youth who will be between the ages of five and thirteen years old, and twenty-five teens between the ages of thirteen and eighteen years old. Most of the programs in the after-school program are tutoring, academic enrichment, we partner with a few agencies, including Mentioned Youth and the Family Learning Institute in Ann Arbor, where we provide additional academic support to our young people. One of our most well-known programs, or the program that we actually got started through Washtenaw Community College is our summer program. Summer program is now in its, I believe, ninth year, it's a low-cost program for children between the ages of five and twelve. Scholarships are available through a partnership with Ypsilanti Housing Commission, where they this year provide scholarships for fifty kids to participate in the program. Uh, we have about a hundred participants each year. This year's camp starts July 2nd and runs through August 17th, we currently, oh, we have eighty-three kids registered this year. During the program, during the daytime, during the program, uh, we offer academic enrichment in the areas of math, history, and literacy, but we also this year developed a very unique STEM program that will benefit all the kids in the center with the exception of the five and six-year-olds. Uh, with this STEM programming, we have, we've got our young people to participate in things such as coding, circuit, circuiting, I'm not a science person. It's, it's a program that WCC has partnered with called V2X, where our students this year are going to learn a variety of things, but most notably in what I think will be exciting to our kids, is they're going to build drones that are actually going to fly, which is amazing. So I'm, I'm happy to see how that works. The goal of our summer camp is to, uh, keep those kids who may have deficits in reading, um, deficits in education during the summer, keep them involved in some activities that will continue to increase their learning ability and make them more successful before they return to school in the fall. This camp also has, uh, free breakfast and lunch for all participants, uh, and we have at least two field trips, one will be, which would be considered academic, and which would, one would be considered fun. So fun this year will be bowling. We're taking all hundred kids, not all at the same time, to bowl here, I think it's at Lodge Lanes this year, just to get them some fun activities and to get them away from, uh, away from the camp, which has been incredibly hot this summer. We're working on a video this year, actually, where we're going to talk about the things we do in camp, and one of the things that, that the community really loves when they see is, it's almost like a military camp. So, our kids are, are called Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, and Delta. The five and six-year-olds are Alpha, seven, eight-year-olds Bravo, nine and ten-year-olds are Charlie, and the eleven and twelve-year-olds are Delta. For me, that works because, one, it teaches the younger kids what group they're associated with, so they always know where they are, uh, where they're supposed to be. So, every morning after lunch, I take them outside and also drill, side, that kind of thing, where I have my whistle. We line them all up in groups, we count off so we know how many people we have in the morning, we do the same thing in the afternoon. We do jumping jacks, a little calisthenics, something I learned, uh, in elementary school that I think kids don't do as much. And then they run around the quarter-mile track at least once, that's their fitness and, and, uh, something that's just get them energized for the learning day. Kids really enjoy it. During the afternoon, we have a jumping jack competition where the group that's the, that's in line, in straight line, loudest, and, and doing the jumping jacks in unison wins tickets, and these tickets can be redeemed for, uh, treats that they get on Friday at four o'clock that they can take home and enjoy with their parents.
Right.
Well, we, one of the, one of the things we really wanted to do this year is, is to focus on the STEM program, and what we have for our seven, eight-year-olds, we partner with PBS, uh, and, and a WCC partner with PBS, and we're going to offer a STEM program that's based on the PBS television show, uh, and each kid who participates in this program will receive a tablet that's already preloaded with educational, math, science, and technology programming, uh, that will also work with their parents with, that you can watch the TV show on PBS and interact with it. We're going to, after the training, we're going to present each of those kids to participate with that tablet at our end-of-camp celebration, which is August 17th at 10:00 AM. I would love for you, as many people as possible, to come and see that. One, it gives the community a better sense of how WCC is involved and the people behind us doing that, but also it really, really encourages our kids to participate.
What date was that?
August 17th, uh, 10:00 AM. We do it for just one hour because it is challenging to keep one hundred kids in a space for more than an hour.
We'll put in your board memos.
Oh, you should get it.
It's very exciting.
We'll send a reminder.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then our Saturday Academy, uh, Saturday Academy is a little different, we do have youth participating, but it's mainly youth from other communities. Uh, one of, two of the programs that we have that are very well-known is our Youth Leadership Program, which teaches our kids how to be effective public speakers, is modeled after the Toastmasters, uh, model. We also have our, our girls group, our girls group, which is a year-long self-esteem, self-awareness, and education program for girls, teenage girls, uh, twelve to eighteen years old, and that culminates in a exposure trip, which we usually go to Chicago, we just actually just left coming from Chicago the week of the fifteenth of June. At those trips, we just expose our kids to things that's different than the city of Ypsilanti, which they're accustomed to. Most often, kids, uh, there's a, there's a question, uh, question and answer kind of sheet they have to complete on- once they return from the trip, and the question I ask most is, "Would you live in Chicago?" And by, I mean, every person, they love it, they love everything there, but they would never live there because there's way too many people there and they think they couldn't survive. Now, other programs that we offer at, uh, Park Ridge Center is our discounted WCC open enrollment classes, which include Zumba, sewing, which is picking up a great deal, uh, and youth piano and guitar. We also offer in partnership with Ann Arbor Public Schools, English has a second language class, this is our third year with that program, and the attendance and enrollment has increased so much that they've asked for a second session. So we'll be two, we doing two sessions, Monday through Thursday, in the morning before the kids, a morning session and afternoon session. Uh, that community has become a lot more diverse, and we have a lot of non-English-speaking residents in that community who look to, uh, to get services provided for them, and hopefully we get them to enroll in classes at WCC as well. And also, and finally, our senior focus classes. Senior focus are our American classes, uh, we just do, the most popular one is probably line dance, which is hustle or, I forgot what else they call it, but they do a variety of line dances for exercise, they are very, very talented. I halfway participated one day, but it's a little too much for me, I don't know my writing that well, but it's a very well-participated, uh, class, uh, as well as our senior fitness class, which is held in other locations as well, but, um, our seniors use, uh, exercise balls to provide, uh, do a variety of stretching and those type of activities. Our community, and this is where I say the unique community programs, we do a lot of things to support efforts in the community in its entirety. One of our most, uh, well-known things is our Monday Community Meeting. This meeting was established about, in about 2012, and it's just a meeting where folks who provide services in and around Washtenaw County, me to talk about what's going on, to see how we can partner and do things in Park Ridge or Southeast Michigan, not to, uh, to make sure that we don't do the same program, we don't have the same activities the same certain days. I build it as a, an informal but informative meeting where people get together and provide us the best services that they can in Washtenaw County. On a good day, there's about forty participants, which includes members of Washtenaw Community College's staff, uh, Eastern Michigan University, Michigan Hope Clinic, students who are doing internships with me through our HSW department at Washtenaw Community College, excuse me, as well as the University of Michigan, and I think this year I have a student from Case Western Ohio. So, uh, it's a place where, um, students who are definitely getting into social service or empowerment, enrichment kind of program can get there and work with the population and learn a lot of valuable skills. Other things we do for community engagement, Ypsilanti Proud Day, was previously Pride Day, they changed the name a couple of years ago, but it's a citywide cleanup and beautification program, uh, all day, I'm sorry, it's usually the, I want to say the fourth Saturday in April, the third Saturday in April, and the entire community, Ypsilanti, Ypsilanti Township just beautifies their area. We get a team and we clean up in and around Park Ridge Community Center and we plant flowers, which this year are beautiful. Or, every year, I can't say the same thing, this year they're beautiful. Our Black History Month, and, and it's actually beautiful because we have a student, one of our HSW students, excuse me, is, uh, loves flowers. So every morning, he gets their tin, he waters them, he weeds them, he does everything with our flowers going, I mean, it looks really, really beautiful. Another thing that we do to educate our young people about the brilliant history of their community is do our, for our Black History Month, we just try to recognize those pioneers who are from Ypsilanti. For those of you who haven't been, I invite you to come off to Park Ridge Community Center, there's about ten portraits that was painted and given to us maybe three years ago, that depict a lot of very important people who lived in and around Ypsilanti South Side. One such is, uh, this Joe Rutherford, who, Rutherford Pool is named after, Dr. Perry, which Perry School is named after. I thought our young people should know that the history of community includes people who places, what, whose name, where places they go, their namesake after, so the pool and the school, for example. Uh, and this year, we did something, uh, just to encourage our community to know what we do at, at Park Ridge. So although we've been there for a lot of years, um, every five years or so, we want to do an open house, because people know we're there but don't know everything that we do. So this year's open house was held in, uh, in April, it actually was a pretty messy day, it rained all day, but we still had about a hundred and fifty participants come out. You see a gentleman pictured there, is Mr. John Brown, he is the president of the Heritage Park Neighborhood Association, which is one of the community groups on the south side of Ypsilanti, and probably the hardest-working man I ever met in my life. He cleaned the entire area that day, brought the biggest grill I've ever seen in my life, grilled hot dogs, hamburgers, corn, and some other stuff, and just made it a really good time. They enjoyed themselves so much that a lot of our, and I struggle, whether they're elders or seniors or retirees, because it depends who I'm talking to, they don't like either one of those titles. But, they kind of gathered in the entrance of the center, like it was the front porch, and just greeted everybody. They were so happy to have people come to the center, and the entire center, I mean, entire community, and all ages of folks actually came out there, so it was pretty cool. Updates and changes. So, um... So the most important change, I would say, is that the new families and new Park Ridge homes. Park Ridge, the new Park Ridge Homes was completed about December, about December, I believe, of last year. The original complex was there in 1943, it was completely demolished and rebuilt. During my conversation with you guys last year, I talked about how I believe that in five to eight years, you'll start to realize the success of those young people who went through Park Ridge. But what I didn't bank on, I guess, is that when those, when new Park Ridge Homes were developed, all of those kids moved out and was displaced and went to another housing site, and they had the option to come back, but most didn't. So even though we have 125 kids registering this year, they're all new kids. So we're almost, in a sense, starting over again with our cultural shift of trying to get our young people to understand and embrace education. And so we're looking at getting these new kids involved and knowledgeable about what we're doing at Park Ridge. And one of the things that's going to be helpful is this year, we receive funding from Washtenaw coordinated funders, a two-year grant in the amount of $132,000 that is going to help support new academic initiatives. One of the things that has always been true to my heart is that we have to get our young people to understand and embrace education. It is the means of my success as a former student at WCC who took a long time to get it. I didn't have an institution or a place like that with caring people in there who can assist me. And I think now, they have that, and we're trying to make sure that we can give them the tools that they need, because as many of us have heard about this third-grade reading initiative and other things, we have to find ways to have our students be successful outside of school to support what's going on in school. And so I'm hopeful that this grant and the programs we develop with our partners will lead us towards that goal. We also have worked on staff development. Our staff is transitional, we have a lot of students who graduate, who are in one semester and not the next semester. A staff full of part-time, staff, a staff of part-timers who are constantly looking for different jobs, and so our turnover is, probably is maybe a year, year and a half for most students. And so we're constantly starting all over, so we're trying to at least develop some skills in those students, so we can better assist not only our families, our kids, but our adults as well. Let me, and lastly, I'd like to say, thank you. That is my presentation, that is my staff from last, that was Thanksgiving of 2017. About seven of those people are not there anymore. But they still come and visit the center. So have any questions?
Yes. I would, excellent presentation, if I may say. Anthony is a real community leader, and he is respected by that entire community. He's almost like the Pied Piper. They follow him, and he, really, Anthony, you are Park Ridge Center because of your leadership. So thank you for everything you do. And his point about the turnover, any of us that have worked with the staff, that's one thing we dislike the most, is staff turnover, because you're starting over constantly, and it's a lot of work when you bring on a new staff. So thank you for doing that.
Got a whole bunch of questions, and I, I've been there at Park Ridge Center, and I'd like to come out again.
Always welcome.
I'm really enthusiastic about all the work that you do there. The Saturday Academy, is that an academic-year program, or does that go year-round?
Academic-year. Most of our programs begin the first Monday in October, and then when school is out. We start the first, the first Monday in October because we always give our kids 30 days to get re-acclimated to the rules and culture of the center. But we start, the center opens when school starts, but our programs start in October.
And so the summer classes you have, or the summer programs are mostly the summer camp?
Yes.
The Monday meetings, is that a year-round program?
Just, we start Monday after Labor Day, and we end the second Monday in June because we start planning for summer camp, which includes getting the facilities.
So that's also academic-year?
Pardon me?
That's also an academic-year program?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The English as a second language, also academic?
Academic-year, yes.
And are those, I don't know how to phrase this, I'm concerned, I see this as a real powerful program, and I think it's really important to deliver it. Are you finding any resistance to attending classes and programs like this for people who might be undocumented?
No, I have, I have not. Again, it's our partnership through Ann Arbor Public Schools. Besides being a wonderful host, I also, they utilize our space. And so as far as numbers, and I don't, I'm not sure that they have an issue with that, but we keep decent numbers. A lot of those people live within walking distance, and I think prior to us opening our site for the program, everybody had to go to the Jewish Families Center, and that was a lot of transportation issues. So again, I don't know about the undocumented part, but that's why we have so many.
The reason I ask, with the current climate in the country as a whole, I think a lot of programs like this, which are really beneficial to the entire community, are seeing a falloff in participation by people who might be fearful of deportation proceedings. And they could gain, from that, the community could gain from their participation in those sorts of programs. And that's why I fear that, because of our current climate, national climate, we lose the participation of people that really add to the community's benefit if they participate. That's why I asked that question, I wasn't.
Okay, and I think it's not an issue, because we're so welcoming at Park Ridge, that people feel comfortable, no matter who, where they're from.
One thing I'd like to say to our staff is some of these things, like if there would be the opportunity for a broader participation from people from the Washtenaw Community College community, like at the open house in April, or other sorts of things, if those could be called out in that digital newsletter we have, the water cooler, which I look at, and I am sure a lot of other people look at, if those sorts of events could be posted in there as something that's coming up, and at the same time, we promote the Park Ridge Center and our participation with the Park Ridge Center and partnership with them, that we promote some of the events there for WCC people to participate. So I would call that out to our PR people, to think about, think about doing some of that cross-fertilization with our community on campus. And then I, I'm going to make an effort to try to come out there while the summer camp's going on.
Always welcome. If I'm unannounced, I want you to see it in its raw state.
Wow. Every time I've been there, it's been wonderful.
Thank you.
In order to avoid some of the politics that's going around in the country, I watch the World Cup from beginning to end. But if you get depressed by that sort of thing, I recommend going to the Monday meeting. It is the most uplifting group of people, all doing wonderful things, sharing, and also, I can't go to the August 17 graduation, but it is, it's a ball. It's just, if you, you just give, you just have a feeling that we're going to be okay because these kids are going to be in charge, and they're wonderful. So I recommend both of those things. Turn off MSNBC and go to those two events.
Back to English as a second language for a minute. I'm interested in the makeup of the students. Do you have any idea what the native tongues are of the students that come to those classes?
I don't collect the data, because again, it's from the Ann Arbor Public Schools, but from what I observe, there's a lot of folks from West Africa. There are a lot of them speak French. There are also a lot of Asian, Indian families as well. So I would say those are the three that are most, mainly, mainly ladies. I do see there, the ones who are dropped off there, their husbands bring them there, but they don't participate.
What's the size of the class?
We have two sessions, a morning session that's from 9:30 to 11:00, then from 11:00 to 12:30. It's about 15 to 20 in each class. And again, we're now offering a second class, so hopefully we'll double that number. And it's just continued to grow.
I have a question. Is that a free service that Ann Arbor Schools offers?
Yes, it is a free service.
Thank you.
That's great. Any other questions?
I, I just want to make a comment. Years ago, I don't remember, Anthony, I was asked to speak at your Saturday Toastmasters.
Yes, yes, it usually is.
And that was my first time, I mean, I had been there, and I saw all of the kids who, some kids even came from Whitmore Lake, I mean, just all around the community. But they asked me to speak, and it was just great, because every, every Saturday, yeah, every Saturday, and it was from like 9:00 to 12:00, I think, something like that, and they had breakfast for them. Pat, I mean, Pat, every table was filled, and it was just like you said, it was just so uplifting to see the students listening to every word that's being said. But the main thing that I really was impressed about was that they were teaching them social skills, how to speak to each other civil, how to be there on time, how to write up their own speeches, how to communicate with each other, I mean, just a whole, whole picture. It's almost like a speech class, but it's not. It really dwells into, to make that person a whole person, not just a little bit. And if you ever, ever are able to go to a Saturday class that they have, it is just wonderful. And they have to give a speech, and they are critiqued by their peers, and they stand there and they listen, and they understand. There is no, no crying, no upsetness, no, I hurt my feelings, or anything like that. I mean, every student was just outstanding. And I thank you and the people who are helping to do this and working with these students, because it takes a lot of time. And it was just, it was just so amazing of how even the parents are there, and they were encouraging their students, and listening to the students, and talking about how much they really enjoyed coming to that.
And I'll just finally add that that program has one minor drug. It's also, it also teaches you how to debate, and two of my daughters participate in it, so stuff at home is a little job.
I remember that, too.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much, Anthony. Excellent report. Thank you very much.
Next, we're going to Math Report, Tab B. That would be personnel recommendations, and that the board approved the personnel recommendations as listed. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Removed and supported. Any discussion?
I always have lots of questions. Just to thank people who've been here for a long time, Roseanne Bailey for the foundation, and Brad Hawth particularly, for 30 years of service. I think he's worked in every single office on the whole campus, everywhere. When I was union president and I wanted to know what was going on, I went straight to Brad. And James Williams. Some, I guess I'll save my questions for another time. That's all.
Any other questions?
Well, I'd just like to echo what Trustee Had just said about Brad. I remember very vividly when I first was elected to the board, and I met Brad, and he was just overwhelming, telling me about the college and how much he loved it here, and what he's been doing and had done. And so it has always stuck with me that this is a person that was really, really into WCC and really enjoyed it, it working here, no matter where he was at.
And I want to jump in on Roseanne Bailey's behalf, as a Washtenaw Community College Foundation Board Member, with about six years of experience. I've worked closely with Rose, and the only redeeming quality about her retirement is that now we only have one Rose to worry about.
Two Roses, right. I agree, and Rose was always the sweetheart, because I always said for the golf outing, Rose, what can I do there? She said, well, I don't know. What do you want to do? I said, I don't know. So she would find something for me to do, and I've always been there ever since, so you see me on the golf course, riding around in the golf cart, handing out water and talking to people, that's what I did.
I enjoyed it, yes.
And just to follow up on that, that strikes me as a pretty important position. Is it posted for new hire?
No, we're not refilling it.
Not refilling?
No.
You're right, it is a very important position. Okay, where am I here? I think we're going to go to my.
See?
Yeah.
To?
We're going down to.
We have a motion to accept the.
Yes, I'd like to hear a motion. Thank you.
I move that we accept the personnel recommendations.
Removed and seconded.
Already said discussions and questions?
Yeah, we did.
Great, on the favor?
Aye.
Pos. All right. Now we're going down to Facilities Development Report, Vice President Allen.
Yes, thank you. This month, Facilities Development Report is provided in Tab C. Most noteworthy, you may have noticed, the bus loop in front of the college is quite torn up. The contractor was scheduled to start on July 9, and by that afternoon, all the pavement was out, so he is going at a very high rate, which pleases us immensely. Other than that, every project on the list that is needed to be completed before the start of the fall semester is on track to be completed before the start of this fall semester, so things are going smoothly in that respect.
Any questions? Yes.
As long as we have a short meeting. Just the, the list of six contracts that are over $20,000 are all things that we've approved already.
Yes.
And these are going forward, and that's why you're listing them.
Yes.
Okay. I just, I never knew that. So many good two years.
Anyone else?
I have a question. All of the contractors, did they have to make a bid on this?
Yes, they did.
Okay, my question then is going to be, are there, or was there any minorities that bitted on this?
That I don't know. I can find out.
Okay. I appreciate knowing that. And also, do you have a list of contractors? I don't need to know that, but sometimes it'd be nice to know, just say yes or no, if you have a listing of minority contractors. I know at one time you did, so I'm not sure you have that or not.
Can we get back with you on that, only because he's new? I don't even know if he knows the list he's working from, quite frankly.
Right.
You know, so respectfully, Mark, I'm saying that respectfully, but I will get you that information.
Okay, I appreciate that. I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but I think it's important, because we're looking at a host of lists, and we're going to be having more things happening on the campus, and we need to have that information.
Absolutely.
There is a report on that at some point.
Sometimes there is.
Which month? I don't remember which month that is.
There is, yes.
It comes at some point.
Diversity Vendor Report.
Diversity Vendor Report.
Diversity, yes.
I have one other question. One thing I noted on here that I just questioned, Huron River Watershed Council Grant upgrades...
One thing I noted on here that I just questioned, Huron River Watershed Council grant upgrades, budget zero, grant canceled. And I just wondered what it was, or what it is.
Yeah, there was a, the Huron River Watershed Council had a list of work sites they wanted to focus on as far as improving the effluent that was going to the waterway. At the time when they built the list, our, our portion of that watershed was about sixth on the list. When they went through their grant process and looked at costs, they ran out of money before they got to us.
Oh, okay. Is it, is it an important thing?
It, it is important, it's not, not a critical thing, it was just going to improve the quality of the water that came off of Bauer parking lots and went to our ponds before it went to the river.
And that was a grant that we requested from the Huron River Shed?
No, that was a grant they were working, we were just a, one of the target sites, they were actually going to do work for us without us asking.
Correct. But I'm wondering if it's affecting the water quality of the Huron River, if it might be something that we should look at maybe doing ourselves.
We can look at it, I'll, I'm not sure.
I'm just curious how much it is or what percentage of it is, but I just raised that question. And as a campus that tries to be sustainable and environmentally conscious, that maybe that's something we should look at.
Okay.
Good.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to remarks and marks of the board, anyone have anything to say? Yes.
My turn?
Your turn.
I, I went to a twenty-fifth anniversary reception a few weeks ago for New Center Nonprofit Enterprise of Work. An organization that I was a founding director of. It's, it's an umbrella agency for three or four hundred nonprofit organizations in Watchdog County. And VP Blakely is the current Chair of New Center, which I was pleased to see, applaud her for her work and her leadership.
And VP Hearns is also on our board. I recruited her.
That's great.
Thank you for telling us that.
Congratulations to both of you.
I've known about New Center before they moved to out there, so I got some help from them years ago.
I was a teacher there.
Ah.
I taught two classes there once.
Is that, wow, wonderful.
I still have my, my student comment somewhere. I'll have to dig them out and go back on memory lane. That was a while ago.
Anyone else have anything smashing things to say?
Yes.
I, as I put on this shirt today, I was wondering if we have a place on campus where the flags or banners or something of all the unions that work with the school are hanging. Do you see what I'm saying?
I don't know, but that's a nice thought.
I mean, there's getting to be more and more of them.
Yes.
And it would be an impressive display somewhere.
Yeah.
I don't know where.
I don't know, I, you know, I don't know, it's probably one of those things maybe we're looking at and we just don't see.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll make a note of that.
Just a, just a PR thing, people walk in and see our connection with, even the, you know, NEA and HSM and all of that, those, it might be a good idea. I noticed in, in one, I guess our board memo, a mention of a grant. And I was reminded that last October, we got a report on what grants were going on. And I'd like to do that again.
Yes.
In a fairly simple form of who's got the grant, how much money is it, when does it run out, who's responsible for it? If there are grant employees who are hired because of the grant, how many, that kind of thing. I look forward to that in October. And, and that's the month we also do enrollment, so I'd like to make sure that we include non-credit enrollment in that report.
Okay, that's good. Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
We'll have non-credit enrollment information, right? We can do it that, at that time.
For whatever you.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be.
Because I want to.
That semester, but previous, whatever.
Right, right. People continue to grow in.
Of course.
So at that point in time?
At that point in time, or even the semester before that, that kind of thing.
That's great.
Thank you.
Any other?
Well.
Well, there's the grant I was thinking of.
Here I go. Last Wednesday, July eleventh, I think I'd mentioned before in the past that, that I was appointed as co-chair for the, at SimCOG and slash MAC Future Skills Task Force. And this is on education to, to just come together with different industries all across the board and businesses to develop a plan to help low-income people who are skill deficient and how we can help them with their educational needs and their skill level, to bring them up so that they're employable. And this meeting this time was in rural Oak, at the Oakland Schools Technical Campus. And it's a STEM technical school. And it was a really good meeting. Dr. Rose was there, I mean, there was, the room was packed, they were bringing in tables and chairs for people to sit down. It was, it turned out really, really good. But the main thing I wanted to say is this, is that everyone is trying to, trying to figure out how we can get people's skill level up to get employed. Because at this meeting, in the last, first meeting that was held in May, that employers, as you heard, are just dying and scrambling to try and find people with skill levels that they can, especially in the occupational level areas. My co-chair, she is the Vice President for, what is it?
Is it Boma?
Boma Hospital. And so she comes from the healthcare side, but also as an employer. And so it was just a good meeting of the minds to have these people there. And I'm going to give you an example who was there. There was Wayne, University, I'm sorry, Wayne University. Well, Wayne State, excuse me. Wayne, Wayne State, who else was there?
Monroe Community College.
Monroe Community College, besides us, there was businesses there, there was, contractors were there, builders were there, plumbers were there. These people are serious and they're looking at SimCOG to see how we're able, with their input, that we can help them get the people, the training and the skills that they need. Not what we say they need, but what they feel that they need. And then there was someone from the state who talked about the Marshall Plan and the Marshall Plan is a same thing, just another name for helping people get their skill levels up. So in any case, it went very well. Then there was a tour afterwards of their facility and it was just outstanding. They have cybersecurity engineering that has teenagers from high school that are, that come in, just like we have our own technical school at our college, middle technical, where they go there, they're bussed in. And they, they spend half a day there, another half a day at their home school or vice versa. They're fed, just like for the summer program, their summer program, they're fed breakfast and they're fed lunch and they have a snack before they go home, bust. And they have all these programs, they have healthcare, they have the engineering, they have all the STEM programs. And we were just outdone because of how the instructors are volunteers. They're there to try to help these students and that's what really struck us about how these people are devoting their time. They get the pay, but it's not like teaching or whatever they were, these are business people, these are teachers, there's all across the board instructors. So it was, it was really, it was really good to see and the students were attended. One of the classes really caught our eye, there was a lady there, she was teaching the students how to, how to determine, this was on like, oh, what was that program used to be on TV where they, when they're trying to find out what blood type somebody has.
Forensic.
Forensics, forensic file, right. I watched that all the time. In any case, they were showing, she was showing them how to determine what type of blood type this is, you know, where the cells are. I mean, this was, I mean, really, really high stuff that these kids are being taught today. And so in any case, I just wanted to share that piece of it. A few weeks ago, June twenty-eighth, SimCOG had their, their education, across the board, everybody has a different spot. I'm in education, they call it block, B-L-O-C. And there was a, you had to be elected, there was an election. And so I was re-elected by the group of people there from different community colleges. And I was re-elected to the Regional Review Committee and that's what I had been trying to help with the transportation, that's what it really is, the transportation, like we got that grant to build the sidewalk around here. And Angela was elected to Transportation Coordinating Council. So we're both on two different types of committees and so that was, it turned out really good on that one. And I think that's what I wanted to say. And I, oh, I do want to say this, I did go and I told two young men I saw Saturday, I went to the, the rolling art car, is that what it's called?
Rolling sculpture.
Rolling sculpture downtown.
That was Friday, I think.
Was it Friday? Friday.
Friday from two until nine.
Two to nine. I tell you, that was my first time down. All these years, I never went, this time I said I was going to go. And I was so happy I did, it was just outstanding, the cars that were there all over downtown. It was just beautiful to see these automobiles that I knew that I wanted one of them and I couldn't afford it. So I had to let that go. Anyway, I was really down there to see if, well, someone told me that Watchdog Community College had a car there. And so I walked all of those blocks around and I finally found Watchdog Community College car. It was absolutely gorgeous. The work that they put into this vehicle, and I sat in it and someone took a picture of me sitting in this vehicle, I had to slide in because it was, the seat was like really small, but it was, it was just great. This car, it was so shiny, it's almost like you didn't want to touch it, it was so pretty. So I asked the guys to come, I said I was going to talk about it, but they didn't come. And I told them if they did come, I was going to have them speak, but they didn't come. But anyway, I just wanted to say, if you get a chance next year, please go, because they were there and they're so passionate about the vehicles that they worked on and they were just, they wouldn't stop talking. People were coming by, talking to them and they're just so interactive with everybody, so. Anyway, that's my report, that's all I wanted to say. Now.
So this is, thank you. Today, this is an exciting week for us because the ironworkers are back, they're on campus and they have approximately eight hundred and thirty ironworkers here. Sunday was their big event and I had an opportunity to welcome them, which I love, Representative Biddle was also there. But it, you know, it's just, I want to thank, first of all, the Kristy Lindemann and the staff, the maintenance, the facilities, the IT staff and the faculty. Actually, I think Julie Kissel, I think you teach in it. So, I mean, just, it's really great to see what, how we respond to this great opportunity. The ironworkers love being here and we love, I've got, having them here as our community does. According to Mary Kerr, they bring a five million dollar impact to Ibsley and Ann Arbor. So it's a really good community outreach service that we provide and we're happy to do that. We also had the UA, well, just want to remind you that the UA is coming, they'll be here on August eleventh. And I don't know how many, Michelle, do you know how many people are coming this year? Last year we had twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, I haven't heard from Mary, but I know this year they're going to bring support staff and train support staff.
So it's even. So that is great. And Chris, I know you teach, do you teach for the UA?
Not anymore, I'm retired.
Anyway. You did? It's great, it is just, you know, these people, both groups are so happy to be here on campus and they are really professionals and their skills are amazing. So I'd like to hear somebody say they don't know math, I'd like to hear somebody say they don't know how to write, I'd like to hear somebody say they don't have critical thinking skills. I'd like to hear somebody say they don't know science because everything they do is, involves those basic skills as well as figuring out how to actually apply that skill. So it's really an honor to work with them. We had some more winners, I'm pleased to say, from the Skills USA. This is a sixth time a WCC welding student has won the national championship at this event, including three former students who are now instructors at WCC. Glenn Kay, these are the past winners who are now instructors, Alex, Alex Paskowski and Brad Klink. So, you know, we are really, this is a good place to learn welding.
For sure.
Joe Eddy, who was a student, finished in tenth place in automatic, automotive collision repair. And Ashley Caravalla won a silver medal in automotive refinishing technology after finishing second against twenty-eight other state championships. And her instructor, Bobby Feldcamp, is one of three former WCC students to win gold medals in this category. So they did a great job and Brandon, please give them our kudos. But while I'm going with kudos, you each have a copy of the Huron River Review. That is an outstanding publication. Tom Zimmerman is the faculty member that is overseeing it. How many years has the Huron River Review? It's got a long history, right?
At least twenty.
Twenty? So.
They don't enter it in competition much anymore because they won first place so often.
So much, yeah.
That they figured they'd let somebody else win first place.
Win for change, that's kind of them.
Every year.
I like winning first place, so.
This is, this is year seventeen.
Oh, okay, seventeen. So really, when you get a chance, it's really a wonderful work of their students and.
Well, but it's, it's not just, that's the neat thing about it, it's not just students, it's retired faculty, it's clerical staff, anyone can submit a picture or a poem or a short story or an essay. So it's not, it really, it's produced by students. But the composite, it's really a community journal.
Well, I'm going to submit something.
There you go.
I've written a couple of poems.
There you go.
Diane Lobata, she was sent every year.
Just don't tell who you are, you might, so you won't get prefaced.
Criticized.
No, 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 you might just put you in just because you're who you are.
Yes, that's true. You'll have to use a pseudonym.
That's right.
Okay. Anyway, since there is not a board meeting in August, I do want to let you know that you will receive a board memo with some updates. And one update in particular, and I know, Mark, I hate to surprise you with this, but we're going to be bringing to you in September, a big purchase for you to consider. You won't vote on it in September, of course, you'll have the month to review it, but we're going to be presenting to you some, it's, it's already in our deferred maintenance, but we need a couple of boilers, do you want to just talk about it for one second?
Yeah, the Morris Lawrence.
Yeah, the Morris Lawrence Building, the air handler serving the area by the firing range, and the two boilers for the facility itself are well beyond their useful life. They're literally being hoped for every day during the winter. So they're probably a project that's designed now, it's out for bids, bids are due on August 8th, and over the winter, we'll have a contractor selected, the parts be manufactured, and then installed next spring after the winter season's over.
So we're talking roughly, what? Just rough? It's rough?
As long as it's not a parking lot, it's okay.
Okay. So I just didn't want you to be surprised about that, because that is a big decision. But you'll have that month to think about it also. Some other things that are happening in September is we have our Economic Club on September 13th. And Regina Anne Campbell is a keynote speaker, and she is going to talk about the entrepreneurial mindset. Free College Day is September 30th. And the next Board of Trustees meeting will be held on September 25th.
Are you?
I'm done.
You're done?
Thank you so much.
Okay. Anybody else has anything to say? I think we're going down to tab G, D?
D.
D, D, D. And this is new business, cybersecurity, mobile hacking workbench, Dean Samoski.
This, I mean, this is another very exciting initiative. So we're excited to even share this, to share this with you.
This is super exciting, and I brought show and tell today. I actually brought Mike Elliott, who's one of the full-time faculty in the CIS department, who's worked with us on this initiative. And I'm sorry, I wish I would have put a picture up here for you, but we're looking at securing a cybersecurity, mobile hacking workbench. Got it, right? There you go. And it will, basically, it'll give students, as well as the community, an opportunity for hands-on learning. And the workbench will have all the components of a car. So it'll have the steering wheel, it'll have the navigation system, windows.
It'll have a bunch of ECMs too, that are going to be hacked.
Explain what that is.
Yeah, computers. One of the things I'd like to say is, before I even talk about this, is that last week, we met, myself, Bill Riker, the fellow faculty member, and Barb Hosworth, and Amanda Deacon from Career Services, met with a couple of folks from Bearcuda Networks. One was a director of customer support, and the other was a recruiting manager. And they recruit all over Southeast Michigan. And they told us that our students are the best from every other school that they interview. And what we're asking today is an investment in continuing, you know, continuing that these programs where we're in fact producing sort of the best students for, in this field. This mobile workbench is something that I actually saw last year, and I was kind of fascinated by it. I saw it again earlier this year. I was at a cybersecurity conference, it was really for the defense industry. And the whole theme of this was hacking vehicles. And vehicles included drones, cars, trucks, whatever the case may be. And this is where we sort of got the idea that this is something that would really be beneficial to our program. It's one of the things, what we want to do is integrate this, not just in our cybersecurity program, because I think this is going to become increasingly important, you know, in the near future. I want our students to be prepared, you know, for what's going to be coming up. Interestingly enough, one of our former students, a graduate of our, with our cybersecurity degrees, actually working for a German auto supplier, and that's his job, is hacking into cars. A car today has somewhere in the neighborhood of about 200 computers, multiple entry points in terms of, in terms of the ability to hack. So again, this is something that we're gonna integrate into the credit program, something that we can do in terms of non-credit also, for workforce training. And potentially, again, we could make this available to all sorts of local businesses. You know, the company that we're, that we're working with, the supplier of this is actually in Grand Rapids, their headquarters out east somewhere, but their development center's in Grand Rapids. And they're the only, this is not something that's normally produced or that they sell. This is custom-built for us, and we requested this. So they're reliant on any other suppliers for this. So this is kind of where we're at.
And there definitely are no other schools that have those. So that's a big feather in our cap.
And how did you get this?
How did I?
You know, how did we, how were we awarded this piece of equipment?
Well, as I said, I approached VP Hearns when I saw this again earlier this year. And we actually contacted the company. And we met with them, I had a couple of different phone conversations with them about this. And that's, you know, that's where we sort of put together the proposal for.
I'll give you the more exciting version. He was at this conference, and he took a picture of this mobile hacking lab and sent it to Kim and I. And he's like, oh my God, this is so cool, we need to get this. And from there, we contacted the company, we set up a meeting to kind of get, you know, our thoughts together on this is really cool, how could we integrate this into our curriculum? What, how can this benefit our students? And that's how it kind of started. So we've been working with this company, and we decided that we wanted to bring this in for our credit programs.
So this is at no cost to the college? Could you explain the grant?
We are getting this through the CCAT grant, so we do have funds through the grant, so this is not going to be any additional cost for the college.
Wow.
It's very good. I wish I had a picture for you.
It should be an easy decision. I've got one, I think I have one on my phone.
We already have, we already have plans to use it in October. There's the Cybersecurity Summit that's gonna be at COVO. And then in November, there's the Michigan Career Quest that we're gonna be taking this to, which is gonna be high school students that will actually get the hands-on experience. So it truly is mobile. The company that we're getting it from, they actually call it the Ford on a board. So it's like pieces of a Ford car that are on this board.
It's actually Cadillac on the board.
So we already have plans to put this in place, and it's not even here yet. So we're hoping to actually get it on campus in October, and we're gonna start using it right away. When the ATC building is completely done, it'll be housed in the cybersecurity lab.
So totally brand-new, I'm sorry. I mean, I burst out like. Totally brand-new, begin in the fall, it's a brand-new curriculum?
Well, we have to, it's gonna take us a little bit of time to integrate it, probably a semester or two, but yeah, it'll be integrated in there. Because, I mean, we have to be trained and things of that sort on it.
And this grant, are you having to renew it? As a company, how?
It's a three-year grant.
Right, and we're a sub-grantee with the University of Michigan in the work that they're doing with connected vehicles. So we're doing more outreach and training in our area, and U of M's doing more research focused on their area of the grant. So that's how we're funding the equipment to integrate to our curriculum.
Oh, okay. I apologize. I'm gonna raise my hand.
No, I was gonna ask about curriculum, but whether it be a program or a course or part of lots of, but you'll figure that out.
Initially, what we're going to do is probably integrate it to our existing course. At some point down the future, it'll probably be a course on to itself.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions. Is this a combination of hardware and software?
Correct.
That was specially developed, and this is, nobody else has it at this point.
Correct.
Seems like a tremendous opportunity, and almost a no-brainer if there's such a thing, for us to approve this. But the, one thing I would say, since the grant is shared with U of M, is this gonna provide us further opportunity to partner with them and with some of their students and bring some of their students into our training?
Yeah, I've thought about that, but that's certainly a good idea, so we can pursue that.
I mean, we would own it. I mean, it would be.
I mean, it would be us, but it provides an opportunity for their students that are in, that are learning in the same yards and option of maybe taking a class here.
Exactly.
And put the credits back in their U of M.
And I think, I think this will be a real, you know, some real opportunities on the non-credit side too, in terms of, you know, working with local businesses, local auto suppliers who want to use this as a test drive.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is exciting.
Very exciting.
Very, very exciting.
That is excited as I am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing this. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll move approval of these contracts. Well, this is for next.
This is just a discussion.
Discussion.
This is a motion to adjourn meeting?
Wait. Oh, it's a discussion.
That's a last item.
Yeah, this is. Do you want to vote on it?
I mean, it's not our money. It's somebody else's money, I don't want to vote it.
Because if there's not a time pressure, I would just say stick with a normal.
Okay. Is there a time pressure?
Oh, it's October 1st, the funds will be released. So that's when we'll be able to make the purchase.
So what will?
So we can do it in September.
Well, our meeting's on September 25th. So it'll probably be, if the board would consider today, would probably be better, since we're not meeting.
I move, if there's unanimous consent, that we bring this to the table for a vote tonight.
Support. Do you support it? All in favor?
Hi.
Have those?
I think it needs to be a roll call.
Okay, it says, well, that was the motion to bring it to.
That's the motion to bring it to, to change the agenda, bring it to.
Okay. All right. The agenda will be moved from discussion to action. Action. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I mean, a roll call. Thank you.
Chairman Kenny O'Connell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lundy?
Yes.
Governor Maloney?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBertie?
Yes.
And Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so unanimous, and it has passed?
Thank you. Thank you for considering this. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you.
So this is a stop the line.
So that's one less thing to.
One less thing to.
Yes, it is.
Sure is. All right, I'm gonna go back.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay.
And I support your movement.
All right, let's go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.